It's just loading and three, two, one, we're good.
All right, listen, it is conversations with Frankie Darcelle. Thank you so much for joining me as we continue talking about those things important to each and every one of us. We go to the city of Detroit where the honorable council president Mary Sheffield, serving as president of the Detroit City Council, moving into year 12, the youngest elected ever to city council in the city of Detroit and now seeking to become the next mayor of one of the greatest cities on planet earth.
Yes ma'am.
Let me first welcome you to conversations. How are you, Madam President?
I am great, phenomenal. It's three, one, three days. So I'm feeling the Detroit spirit and to be here with the legendary Frankie Darcelle just also made my day as well. So glad to be here, see you in good spirit.
Bless you absolutely and happy three, one, three day to everybody in Detroit, which makes Detroit so, so, so unique. We're going to have a conversation about moving forward. Madam President, I want to start here. Why now? And why should people come August primary elect you to serve as the next CEO? To become the next mayor of the city of Detroit?
Yeah, thank you for that. Well, you know, my entire life since I was a child has been dedicated to serving this city. Born and raised in Detroit, as you mentioned, elected to city council at the age of 26 and in a lot of ways, I feel like I was a part of laying the foundation of where we are today. We all can agree that Detroit has changed over the last 12 years. It has definitely progressed in a lot of ways, but there are still far too many Detroiters, too many neighborhoods and too many small businesses that I encounter every day that feel that that growth and that prosperity or revitalization has not touched them yet. And so while I have done the best that I could do, serving on the city council, the last 12 years, laying the foundation for so many amazing initiatives from housing and economic development to neighborhood investment, I now have the ability to have a greater reach in an impact to ensure that people our neighborhoods are centered in the conversation as we grow and rebuild Detroit. And so you are dealing with someone who has been here, that has never left, that has delivered, right, for Detroit? Not just making promises of what I want to do and I'm going to do, but has a proven track record of delivering for people and for businesses, right? Someone who has been a bridge builder, who has been able to bring business and community together for the betterment and for the progression of our city. And so I am excited about this opportunity. I have been running Detroit for 12 years and as Big Sean just said, I am not tired yet. I have the energy, I have the ability, the capabilities in the institutional knowledge of running government. I've served on almost every committee here at the city council level, whether it's planning and development, budget and finances, and understands the intricacies of how government should be run. So to have someone that is so grassroots, that also comes from organizing, from mobilizing, from social justice, and now leading in the mayor's office, I think is what we need at this very important moment.
And, and of course, there have not been too many actual polls. People are still throwing their name in, into this, this very coveted race. I'm going to talk about a number of things you talked about. I want people to know as well, post your comments. I want to hear your comments. We'll get the council president to answer those as well as we move forward. But let's, let's go back here and you know, I have absolute respect for your grandfather and the great work that, that, and the, and the legacy that he has left for unions in, in the city of Detroit, which is still palpable and we feel them today and, and of course founding Dabo as well. And then there's your dad, who you know, I have a great relationship with and respect for. Out of talking to about 10 people, just 10 random people via Facebook and others that I might know, seven out of those 10 people said that you are their candidate. I would suggest to you though, in speaking to your father off the record, but there's some concern by a few who believe because of your father's legacy, that he would have some influence in your campaign, or if you were successful at becoming the mayor of the city, the city of Detroit, and they're concerned about that level of influence. How do you respond to those who believe that?
I'm so glad you just called it out and, and it is something that I've heard and it's so far from the truth. Those who know me know that I am my own person. While I love my father and you'll never hear me say anything bad about him because that's my father and I've learned a lot from his legacy and him as a leader and what he does, but we don't always agree. In fact, there was a proposal that was before voters a while back with, I think it was Prop N. It was a demolition proposal and I was completely against it. My dad was completely for it and we were on two completely opposite sides. There has been several things that have come before Detroit as, as relates to initiatives and things that me and my father differ on. And so as an adult, as someone who has an opinion, I will always stand firm on my belief in what is right for Detroit. My father, and again, if anyone knows me for real, knows that my father has absolutely no influence on, on what I do in that regard. I am my own person. I have my own beliefs and I form my own opinions based on what I receive, what I read and what I hear from the residents here in Detroit.
All right, listen, so want, want to hit this part as well. First two things. One, there's not been a successful person who has run from city council to become mayor, or there's not been a woman elected to the, to that coveted seat. I have said to you, I've been waiting on the first woman to be elected mayor in the city of Detroit in recent history. Sharon McPhail has probably gotten the closest and now here you are. We know from this past November that you gotta jump higher, you gotta run faster and you gotta stand taller. How are you prepared as a woman, more specifically in this DEI conversation, an African American woman over a city that's 82% African American, ready to serve in that capacity?
You know, there was never a council member that was elected at the age of 26 and I remember going door to door at that time. And this was post Kwame Kilpatrick and there was this era of, you know, we just elected someone young and the trust factor wasn't there, but I gave every resident my commitment that I was served with integrity and that I'm my own person. And that had never happened and it did. I made history at the age of 26. And then again, serving as the council president. And so I'm not new to first and I think that for me, it's about showing others what can be done. We, at some point, that glass ceiling has to be shattered. If it's not me, it will be hopefully someone else. And so this movement and this, this, this campaign is, is, is hopefully inspiring others to want to step up and do the same. But again, I fall back on the work that I've done, being someone young who has served this position in this office with integrity, making sure that I don't just show up and make promises and, and utilize the seat, but I deliver for Detroiters. And so I get the sentiment, to be honest Frankie, that people are excited for a woman and people are excited, excited for me in this position. And I will say this, I think the reason why we have not traditionally seen a council member ascend to the mayor's office is also in the past, council has not had the best reputation. You know, there was a lot of controversy. There was a lot of adversarial bickering, back and forth. This council over the last 12 years has been completely different as it relates to collaboration and working with the mayor. We have now been a part of the conversation of actually rebuilding and moving Detroit forward. And so the perception of council has changed. It wasn't, you know, it used to be, you know, council and we still are the body that's blamed for everything, you know, we, it's always been that way. And I think in the sense it always will be, but now it's a little bit more of a, of a respect for, you know, they're partners in this growth. And so when I'm out in community and I'm knocking doors and I'm talking to residents, people are saying, wow, I appreciate the fact that you are actually working with the mayor. You all are getting things done. And that perception I think is going to play into this next election with me running for mayor as well.
All right, we know that in cities like Chicago and others like that downtown in Detroit has done exceptional. And rebuilding its downtown, 1,852 additional people since 2022 have moved into the city of Detroit. In terms of economic development, you've served on a number of different committees, you serve as council president. So how, what grade would you give city council, the mayor's office, but specifically ascending to become mayor on assuring that that level of growth can hit the neighborhoods when you talk about economic development? Everybody loves to be able to come downtown, have a wonderful time, but they also want to be able to know that my block, my neighborhood, my community is getting better. Well, how do you respond to that as city council president?
Yeah, you're, you're preaching to the choir. Listen, every conversation that is before me, when it comes to, to economic development, I always center neighborhoods. There is no question that the growth that we have all experienced, we all feel that it needs to come deeper into our neighborhoods without a doubt. And so that is a focus of my administration as mayor is how we intentionally incentivize the development of housing, of businesses, how do we repopulate our neighborhoods, invest in our block clubs? How do we get to a point where we can reduce our property taxes? Because that hinders the growth of our communities and our businesses.
Oh, I'm loving this conversation now. Gotta ask you, gotta ask you. Go ahead, go ahead.
I have a lot more to say about economic development. No, but I just want you to know.
You too, go ahead.
Yeah, I think we're breaking up. Sorry Frankie. But I wanted to give an example though, because again, it's not about what I'm going to do. I want to give an example of what I've done. So when the Detroit Pistons came to downtown Detroit, this was a huge economic development that happened in Detroit. They moved here, jobs were coming. I ensured that a percentage of the income will go into a fund called the Neighborhood Improvement Fund that can only be used for neighborhood development. That is the type of intentionality that we have to have in conversations when we talk about economic growth. So something that traditionally or originally benefited downtown, I found a way to fund, to take money and invest it back in our neighborhoods. So those are the type of initiatives that I'm looking forward to. Again, property tax reform is another one, creating more of a streamlined processes so businesses can set up shop in our communities. But the investment of our neighborhoods is definitely a priority for me.
All right. So we're going to make the transition. I only have 30 minutes and I want to get to some questions. Post your questions. Want to say hello to Sandra Dove and Eric Brown. Thank you so much for checking in. We're going to read some of those questions coming up in just a few minutes. Madam President, you talked about economic development and, and the work that you've done so far. Clearly, one of the challenges is assuring that there is a public school system as well that is working for the residents and new families. New families or businesses are reluctant to move into communities where their employees have to pay more or private, for private education, or where the educational system may have some challenges. The decisions have already been made. Do you believe that the mayor of the city of Detroit, or would you want to have just a little more say if you have to be the spokesperson and advocate to draw businesses to the city? What do you say in terms of the educational process and where it stands today? And the influence that the mayor may have as the city looks to grow?
Yeah. So I believe that the mayor has to be intimately involved in any discussions around education. I do know we have our, our board, our DPS CD board, elected board that represents the school district, but there has to be more accountability with the superintendent. And I believe that there needs to be a coalition formed of charter schools, DPS CD and others coming together and really having some benchmarks and measurements on the outcomes of education in our city. And so while the mayor may not have direct control over DPS CD, there cannot be a separation in the sense that the mayor cannot be vocal and be actively involved in education reform, whether it be advocating and lancing, whether it be using my position to improve the quality of life for our students. I mean, there's so many different facets that the mayor can insert themselves in education. I think of some of the issues now absenteeism, which is the number one issue facing DPS CD. I have some ideas of what I would want to do as mayor to address getting butts in seats because that is one of the reasons why our testing scores are, are low. People have to come to school and show up. It's prudent. If you show up in school, your scores increase. There are some things that I would like to do with after school programming, for example, to ensure that every student in DPS CD has access to after school, after school programming. So I think the mayor, you know, and I've watched the former mayor, you know, you find what your, your niche is, right? What, what issue? Cause there's so many issues in DPS CD, right? I mean, you could even go from the social aspect of a child, from housing to, you know, all of the other issues that prevent the productivity of our children. But finding what it is that I really want to focus on and as mayor, insert myself in those particular issues. But I will tell you this, that as mayor, I will be using my platform and position to be very vocal about education reform and ensuring that we're changing the culture of DPS CD. Because if we all want our population to increase and if we want families to move back in Detroit, and I am so big on community and building back that neighborhood, that putting the, the neighbor in hood and having that sense of community back in Detroit, which I know we all love, it all goes back to schools. Cause I hear it all the time. We got to improve our educational system. So I'm looking forward to, to forming those coalitions, bringing the right people together and really focusing on absenteeism, after school programming, you know, dual enrollment to ensure that we're properly training our young people for the skills that they need to succeed after they graduate as well in many ways.
So we know that this is probably one of the most political difficult times. 1,600 Pennsylvania Avenue, the nation and the world has not seen politics the way that we have seen it. We know that Detroit is a border, is a border city to Ontario. And with the tariffs on the table, it changes every 10 minutes. So I would hate to ask a question and in five minutes, the president of the United States changes that. However, when we talk about the energy, electricity and the like and it being cut off, what is your thought if you are serving as mayor today and you're successful at becoming the next mayor? One question, number one, just the thought of Ontario, especially with the shared communities between Canada and Detroit. Do you think that would be strained based on some of what's happening right now in Washington, especially they're talking about tariffs? And what Canada is willing to do to cut off those bordering states, Michigan being one and Detroit more specifically, because it's just a bridge wide or tunnel right away?
Yeah. So I think we all are concerned right now about what's happening in Washington and the uncertainty that it brings to not just Detroit, but other urban cities and other cities around the country. For me, I'm going to always stand for what is best, best for our city, what is best for Detroit. And in doing so, I am more than willing to work with anyone. And now we have the Trump administration there, which means I have to go out and reach across the aisle and find common ground, find common ground that will benefit the growth and progress of Detroit. And so without a doubt, there's a lot of uncertainty. There's a lot of, of, of us all trying to navigate these tariffs and what that means for Detroit, but you will have in me as a mayor, an advocate for standing firm on what would best benefit Detroit. But then also I think it's about the partnerships and the coalitions. How can we view these as regional issues, working with Ontario, working with other counties to see how we could come together? Because it's strength in numbers and look at things from a regional approach to make sure it benefits Detroit and others. So I would just say, as it comes to the climate, the political climate in general, again, you have to find common ground and you have to be willing to work across the aisle and build those relationships to work with everyone.
Do you believe that now from a congressional, and we know that we have a new senator that's representing or that we're Detroit fools, and do you believe that, that Detroit is getting its fair share from Washington, you can, you know, financially?
I always will say we always need more. As someone who sits at the table and we see the funding that's coming from the federal government through community development, block grants and housing support, and, and, and just the overall need for infrastructure, right? Improvements, whether it's home repair grants, our, our roads, our water infrastructure, I mean, and, and climate resiliency. I mean, we need more money for sure. We are, I'm not going to slight anyone. I think that they are doing what they can, but I think there's always room to have more funding and resources come back to Detroit to address the myriad of issues that Detroiters face every day. And we all know that our limited city budget will not address these issues alone. We are going to need the support of the federal government and the state of Michigan to address the crisis that we face in Detroit, whether it's housing, whether it's infrastructure, which are two big things that I think federal funding typically helps with.
All right. As we get ready to wrap up, I want to ask some of the questions. We talked about the educational issues. The president addressed several of those that were mentioned. And I'm going to give you as well, Madam President, an opportunity for closing comments at the end of this interview. But I did want to ask you, what do you think has been one of your greatest challenges and your greatest successes? What would you tout under your current position as president of city council? What has been one of your greatest challenges and you think your greatest successes?
So I'll start with the latter as far as the greater successes and you know, I really am proud of my legislative achievements. You know, city council is a legislative role, right? We're lawmakers and I have made it a mission to listen to the needs of Detroit. So I championed a package of bills called the People's Bills, over 20, probably 23 pieces of legislation that has truly addressed everyday quality of life issues from reduced parking tickets to community input over government surveillance, to free access to an attorney during an eviction proceeding, to neighborhood improvement grants, where we just now today talked about 96 organizations in Detroit have received block grants to beautify their communities in their neighborhoods. Things like our inclusionary housing ordinance that has paved the way for over a billion dollars, a billion with a B, investment in the, in, in quality affordable housing in Detroit. And so again, I am so proud of not just occupying this seat, but using it as a way to deliver policy that has truly changed the trajectory of, of Detroit in the residents' lives that I represent. One of the challenges that I faced is the limitations of preemption from state law. My ability not to be able to really set a vision and priorities. So there, there's things that I believe in as a council member that I know that the need exists, but you're limited as a council, council member. You're one of nine. And that is why, again, I think serving in a different capacity, you have a greater reach again to, to deliver on these higher level priorities that I believe are needed in Detroit. So a lot of preemption, a lot of blocks to pushing things forward that I know is needed in Detroit.
So I hear you. And so as mayor, those decisions will then be decisions that you can make. On day one, what do you think would be one of the first things or initiatives you start to work on in terms of what you see for the city of Detroit?
Yeah. So from day one, you know, I would definitely, reducing property taxes is extremely important to me. And so forming a coalition around that and figuring out what the necessary tools are to achieve real structural property tax reform. I have a lot of ideas around some neighborhood investment initiatives that I want to continue in or expand. The Down Payment Assistance Program was a program that was started under this leadership here in Detroit, which I'm very proud of. And figuring out ways that we can expand that so that we can have more homeowners and access to programs for first time home buyers. And so anything that is around housing, right? We know that we have a housing crisis and we have to ensure that we're creating more pathways to accessible housing in Detroit, neighborhood investment and improving the economic well being of Detroiters would be my main priority day one in office.
All right. Madam President, your closing comments, when the primary happens, coming up in August, when people walk into that booth, they are giving their ballot, what would you say to them as to why your name should be selected?
Yeah, I will first say thank you to Detroit for 12 amazing years of serving this great city. I have been here through the good and the bad, never left, have been here serving and delivering for Detroiters. And I will say to them that this next five to 10 years is so important. We have an opportunity now to ensure that the growth that we've all worked so hard for reaches more people. Prioritizing number one, our neighborhoods. Secondly, the investment of safe, quality, affordable housing and a path to homeownership. And number three, the investment in people to ensure that we are raising the income levels of Detroiters, creating generational wealth and ensuring that people have an opportunity to thrive and not just survive in Detroit. And so you are voting for someone who has delivered for you, has always proven to invest in people. And now we have the ability to take that to the mayor's office and do it at another level. So I'm excited about this opportunity and, and excited that others will join in as well.
All right. The honorable city council president, Mary Sheffield, city of Detroit, candidate for mayor of one of the greatest cities on the planet. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much Frankie. You all have a great day.
All right, be well.
No questions from the audience today or?
Well, yeah, well, I can, well, okay, let me give you, well, a couple of them, we'll repeat it. Here we go. You want this one? How would you, can you still hear me? You there?
Yes, I can hear you.
How would you prevent, and this is the quote, how would you prevent, this is from Eric Brown, how would you prevent Detroit from going back to bad decisions that resulted in bankruptcy?
Yes, financial stability and financial discipline is key. We have made it a point at this council to ensure that we're investing in our reserves, that we have a retiree protection fund that ensures that we're ready to make those balloon payments as they come and being conservative in our spending. As someone who was here at the midst of bankruptcy, I definitely, in financial oversight, I definitely understand that we have to be very conservative, conservative in our approach to spending. And so ensuring that we're finding additional revenue streams, right, to come in Detroit, which is a huge priority of mine. We can't keep relying on the same revenue in Detroit. We have to diversify our incomes and find different ways to bring revenue in Detroit to support the various needs, I think is important. But financial discipline, looking for additional sources of revenues to fund all of the amazing efforts and priorities that we have, I think will be key in that.
And, and on the back of that, and not to be able to tap into any of the retirement of fire, city or any retirees. That I'm sure. Can you, can you hear me? And not be able financially, looking for different revenue streams. But whatever the transition is, is not to tap into any retirement retirees in terms of police, fire or city employees and the like. If you want to respond.
Oh no, our retirees have, have contributed so much and have sacrificed so much. In fact, I'm working on a program now that will give them preference in city programs to fast track them through some existing programs. We just recently restored the 13th check for our retirees that was eliminated back in 20, I think 2012, prior to me coming on council. So I would never touch anything with our retirees or our police and fire. They have sacrificed so much. My idea was, is to figure out how we can create additional revenue, whether it be through an entertainment tax or through some type of local sales option or other way where we're kind of taxing entertainment, those who may come to Detroit to patronize our city that can generate revenue for Detroit to fund numerous priorities.
All right. I'm going to ask this next question. We'll take a final question from Reese, but KYG said, what is your specific plan for black, underprivileged citizens of Detroit for employment opportunities?
Right, great question. So again, I think it's about going back to how we are investing in people. Detroit right now has one of the highest poverty rates in the country. I think we're three times higher than the national average. And childhood poverty actually is even higher than that. And so getting back to how we build our middle class is important. Investing in people is the answer. So you know, skills for life, skilled trades planning, skilled trades programs, workforce development, all of these things to me are how we increase the living wage of Detroiters who are working to date and ensure that they're actually not surviving again, but thriving.
All right, great. Final question, Reese, KYG's last question about gentrification.
Yes, KYG asked, what is your specific plan to end gentrification in Detroit?
Yes, I love this because actually that is the, the reason why the impetus for the inclusionary housing ordinance. We were seeing at a vast rate, market rate development coming to Detroit. They were actually also requesting abatements and they were building market rate units throughout the city of Detroit. And as soon as I noticed that, I pulled together housing advocates, community stakeholders, and we came together to figure out how we can create a law that will mandate that as housing is developed, that a portion of those homes be set aside for low income housing. And so that is how, that is one specific way is that as we are developing and encouraging housing and development in the city, that we are incentivizing and encouraging that a portion be set aside for mixed income housing or low income housing, I should say. What I've learned and from my studies, communities that have diversity in incomes, that is high rates, middle and low are stronger communities, right? It creates economic upward mobility for residents. And so to me, the strategy again is to ensure that we're not just having pockets of, you know, huge higher incomes, but we diversify those communities to incorporate different incomes as well.
Yeah. So the current HUD, just on the back end of that, the current HUD secretary as well, cutting back on financing or contributing to cities that were section eight or the like and cutting back some of that revenue. Do you think it will hurt cities like Detroit from being able to help build? from being able to help build or create opportunities for those who are financially underprivileged or need some type of housing stipend? That those federal dollars won't be there. How do you respond to that?
You know, it's a real thing. I am very concerned about how federal resources are, are going to be jeopardized, especially as it relates to low income housing. But again, it goes back to how do we incentivize through private investment and private developers, the development of low income housing. And we're doing that now by offering tools and incentives to say, hey, if you're going to build a, you know, a hundred unit building, can we ensure that at least 20% of those are going to be dedicated to affordable housing? But I think the main issue we have now in Detroit is how do we actually define what affordable is, right? Because a lot of what we're setting aside for housing technically is not reaching the demographics of Detroiters that we need for housing. And so when we talk about gentrification, while we may be setting aside housing for affordable, is it actually saving in housing and keeping the Detroiters that we want here? And so that is something that I'm also planning on addressing and working to, to resolve as well.
All right. Final question for you. We are like three and a half minutes over. I'm a stickler for time and I respect your time. How does Madam President, this is from one of the social media pages. How does Madam President intend on growing the population? The city has lost a, a large population over the last 10, 20, 30 years. What is the council president's plan or thoughts on growing population and in the city of Detroit and bringing back people back to live within the city limits?
Yeah. So for me, again, I, I want Detroit to be a destination of opportunity. I think we all can think back, my grandparents, and I'm, I'm sure everyone has some lineage that goes back to their family coming here from, from down south, escaping those conditions and coming here for opportunity because it was a place where you can get a home. You had a path to homeownership. You had a great paying job, path to entrepreneurship. And so you have to foster an environment that, that wants, that creates a, a place for families to not just work and play, but to live. And I think it starts with investment in our neighborhoods. We talked about that already, right? How are we ensuring that they're walkable, that they're vibrant, that they're safe, that our commercial corridors are active and vibrant as well? And that our property taxes are reduced and that our school systems are improved. Also think that we have to have emerging jobs, right? Emerging industries, opportunities for our young people to want to come here into work and have opportunities as well. So again, I think it's a myriad of things that really fosters an environment that makes it conducive to families to want to come and to raise their families. We have so many people that come and hang out in Detroit. They work and they play, but they not, don't necessarily see it as a place to call home. And I think it goes back to the basics of how we create community. We also have to address transit. You know, there's so many young people that I talk to that talk about how, you know, in other major cities, they prefer to go there because our transit system has to be improved. So again, it's really honing in on all of these things that create an amazing world-class city, starting with the basics, you know, property tax reduction, investment in our neighborhoods, making sure that we have good paying jobs where people can raise their families, have benefits and healthcare. These are the things that attract families and will grow our population here in Detroit.
All right. The honorable City Council President Mary Sheffield, candidate for mayor of the city of Detroit. Madam President, thank you for your time. But thank you for the extra couple of minutes as well.
Thank you Frankie. I appreciate your time and thank you so much for having me.
All right. We appreciate you.
Bye bye. Have a blessed day. You too.
You do the same. You do the same. And we are still kind of getting, we also have just a couple of extra additional questions. Your mic is, your mic is on and there were a couple of little snafus there, but that's technology for you. Thank you so much for monitoring these. Do want to thank Reese for his time. Absolutely do want to thank once again, the president of the Detroit City Council for joining us for this conversation. You'll be able to find it on YouTube.
Facebook, Instagram. We're live on all platforms.
Yeah. You know, so there, there's, there are a number of conversations that we're going to have. It's interesting because my phone, I'm looking at my phone at the same time and it's just blowing up with three or four different things happening at the same time. But very engaging conversation with the president. Look forward to seeing what's going to happen over the next couple of weeks. For a lot of people, they would say this is still early. This is March. The primary is in August. There are a number of candidates that we're going to be talking with as well. And to those who submitted their questions, we appreciate you for that. Politics is an ever-changing process for people who are in and then sometimes out and for people who are out before that deadline who may be in. But we do appreciate the president for her time and joining us. Listen, again, don't forget to go to.
Go to YouTube, go to Facebook and go to Instagram. It's going to be posted all over there.
Right. And you will also be able to hear the audio. I will be sharing the audio as well on the radio shows. So again, it's conversations. My name is Frankie Darcelle. Thank you so much for joining us.